All right.
May have heard there is a fire. Friday night? Other than that, I didn't know. I didn't know. Uh, and, uh, Man's Fire Department is responding. I would just like to summarize the, uh, activities of a couple of our members. Uh, Man's Fire Department, this is Black Street Fire at 95 San Creek Road at 10:13 a.m. The crew of Second, uh, the crew of Second Assistant Chief Dudley, Captain TJ Richardson, Lieutenant Tony LaPari responded with a tough six.
Crew completed multiple operations throughout the duration of the fire, including roof operations, operating hand lines, and overhaul. During the overhaul portion of the call, a member of another town's, uh, department collapsed while inside. Lieutenant La-
Fire was down. With assistance of Chief Dudley and other members of the fire service, they were able to get firefighter out to EMS. Down firefighter was having a cardiac episode and was rushed to the hospital.
Firefighter is in stable condition. And thanks to the quick actions of our members, Tony LaPari and Jonathan Dudley, Manz was, uh, uh, able to save that person and returned to service approximately 2 p.m. So I'd just like to thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes on the July 3rd, uh, board meeting, organizational meeting pending some changes like submitted.
So Moon? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have warrants and payroll, please.
Warrant number four. General forty thousand, six hundred and one dollars and sixty-six cents. Water two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Sewer a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents totaling two hundred and sixty-three dollars, thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that total again?
Two, six, three, six, six, eight point nine eight.
So, anyway, I'm not done yet.
Well, he waited.
Oh, I was answering his question. Payroll number four, hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty, eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents. And those are your warrants.
So Moon? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're up.
No tranche.
No tranche, there's no tranche. You're up for financial.
We're gonna have a financial review before we go out. Before open floor.
Yeah, it's gonna make you first. Get out of here. Were you complaining? Show your proof.
Okay, uh, for last year, this, last fiscal year, um, our adjusted budget was five million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, which included seven hundred and forty thousand surplus applied. The actual expenditures were five million, four ninety-eight, three nineteen. The difference being three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, which is part of the seven hundred and forty thousand surplus that we didn't spend. But we got that totally back in the bank. Revenues four million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars was the budget. Actual was five million, three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we had a positive revenue flow of five hundred and ninety-one thousand, sixty-five dollars, which included three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars more in sales tax, fifty thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars more in safety fees. Plus, we got a second ARCA check that don't even, it just goes through the checkbook to a separate account. And then plus proceeds from the Hudson River lawsuit. Had no idea what that was. Somebody down river sued for something and we got a chunk of it. Don't know why, but we did. And then we got a twenty-three thousand dollar J cap grant per court that Susan has put in for. And so we had a pretty good year for the budget. However, this fiscal year's budget includes eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars surplus applied to the balance, to balance the budget. So as usual, I'll be watching this spending carefully. Uh, so we don't spend everything and start to build up a rainy day surplus fund so we can put some money aside in case we need it. Water fund, um, that was fine, so was the sewer fund. Um, so far this year, two months, I think it'll be eighteen. We've spent approximately twenty-seven percent of our expenditure budget. Uh, there was some bond payments in there and things like that to push it because they come so often and they come early in the year or summer. Uh, we paid a water bill this year for water. It looked like we spent a lot, but it was last year's water bill. So I tried to holler so I didn't send it. Um, so we're at about forty percent of there. We spent about forty percent of the water fund. And about ten percent of the sewer fund at two months. So in two more months, I'll give you another update on where we stand this year, on how it goes. So any questions?
Have you received the, uh, the, the, the sales tax number?
We should be getting that next one. Hopefully, that'll be the first one for this year. And we'll see how it goes with what we got in previous years. But other than that, we're doing pretty good right now.
Does sound good. Considering a lot of the fight just finding revenues down, it's really good.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, I think I saw something somewhere that said sales tax was down one point nine percent.
One point nine percent, yeah, all the counties.
For counties. But that does suck, I don't know.
Any more members have any questions? Questions there?
Good.
Hi, Sal.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, now I'd like to do the, Tim, do you want to talk about the 169 reintroduction?
Yes, um, so at interviews at the last meeting, uh, amendments to, uh, our zoning for section 160, uh, for the business, uh, Broadway Business District. Uh, and it was, uh, involving, uh, adding a definition for controlled substance dispensary. We had planned to have the public hearing this evening at that point, but there was some changes that were required, uh, and the changes were accepted. But this means that it has to be reintroduced as we have to send it back to the Old County Planning Board for review before we can, you know, we can introduce it. But at this point, then we can, we have to have time to send it to the Old County Planning Board. They have to review it, approve it, then we can, then we can set it for, uh, a new public hearing. Uh, generally, Matt, that shouldn't take more than a few days after introduction.
It's already been sent to the county.
Okay, they did send it already, okay. The revised version. All right. So we would have no problem at this point setting a new public hearing for the next board meeting. It should be, uh, the seventh of August. If that's, and, you know, if everyone's good with that. Yes, okay, I'll read that, I'll read the revised version, okay. Uh, Local Law Number Seven for Village of Manans, amending chapter 169 zoning of the Village of Manan, uh, Manan Vote Code. Uh, Section One Legislative Intent. The village board finds that is the best interest of the Village of Manans to amend, uh, chapter 169 of the Code entitled Zoning in order to revise certain provisions related to dispensing controlled substances. Uh, Section Two Broadway Business District amended section 169 dash 20, Broadway Business District as follows. Uh, Section 169 dash 20 E, Special Uses. The following uses are authorized only by special use permit approved pursuant to this chapter at, uh, Controlled Substance Dispensary. Section Three Neighborhood District T4. Amend 169 dash 21 Neighborhood District T4 as follows. Section 169 dash 21 D Site Plan Use. The following are uses authorized with Site Plan Approval pursuant to this chapter. Remove medical facility, uh, twenty thousand square foot. Section Four Village District T5. Amend section 169 dash 22 Village Center District T5 as follows. Section 169 dash 22 E Special Uses. The following uses are authorized by special use permit approved pursuant to this chapter. Remove cannabis retail dispensary. Section Five Definitions. Amend 169 dash nine four definition as follows. Add Controlled Substance Dispensary at business licensed by New York State Office of, uh, Addiction Services Oasis that is registered to operate in the state of New York. Sales prescribed or otherwise distributes drugs, goods, or materials that are listed as controlled substances under the Federal Controlled Substances Act or the New York State Public Health Law to persons and under restricted conditions authorized by the state of New York. These uses include opioid treatment and medically assisted treatment programs. For the purpose of this chapter, Controlled Substance Dispensary shall not include cannabis retail dispensaries defined separately in this chapter. Amend cannabis retail dispensary as a retail facility for sale cannabis products. And the change is licensed by the Office of Cannabis Management, OCM, pursuant to New York State Marijuana Regulation Taxation Act. Uh, Section Six Severability. If any section of this law shall be held unconstitutional, invalid, or ineffective in whole or in part, such determinations shall not be deemed to affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of this local law. Section Seven Violent. This local law shall take effect immediately upon filing New York State. I'd like to request that they be set to public hearing on August 7th.
Can you explain that in simple terms? You're allowing, you're allowing a special hearing to take place for any facility that's not over twenty thousand square feet.
It's not a public hearing at this point. It's just an introduction of the, yeah, it's just an introduction of the.
Are you gonna do the law to allow a facility that's under twenty thousand square feet to open without a special permit?
This, what it's, what this says is medic, we are removing the definition of medical facility, twenty thousand square foot from the neighborhood district.
You're removing twenty thousand square foot from the neighborhood district.
The neighborhood district, yes.
So a facility under twenty thousand square feet can open without a special hearing?
No, so in the, in the existing zoning law, medical offices of twenty thousand square foot or smaller are allowed in T4 Neighborhood District. This proposed law is seeking to re, to not allow any medical offices in the T4 District. That was the only medical office allowed in T4. So this will remove that. Okay, so there would not be the, the ability for it to be used for any type of medical facility.
Right.
Okay.
There are others, there are others that were, were.
Right.
Any other comments? I won't.
No, I would imagine, because I know having something written to you is can be confusing. Don, I showed.
It'll be on the website soon as I.
It'll be on the village website by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so it's down for a public hearing on August 7th or 6th, to Manans. Um, all right, we're gonna go now, uh, open forum.
Now, even though I gave you letters, nine letters, but I'm not gonna say much, only little. You already know what the issues are. I do have two things. Now, I'm gonna ask Don Hanigan again. Did New York State DOT repair that right red light signal going north to Broadway between 229 and 243 white and gray residential house on east side of Broadway?
They reported the DOT.
All right, I hope they fix it. That would be good, as I have reported this to police and Don Hanigan up three times. One more thing. I'm delighted to hear that several metal street light markers on Broadway will be repaired, including metal street light marker number 67. We've been wanting to get, been reporting this. It's been out for several months. Remember, street lighting is one of the most critical public services. We gotta have street lighting serviced, you know, every single day of the year. And Brian, I could, I'd be glad to continue to work with you on several issues. Or you will get your five letters.
Okay, thanks, Don.
Next month.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Done.
Frank, can we, can we go back to Tim's introduction? Is the Fusion facility inside this district that you're talking about?
Inside the T5? No.
So what you just introduced has nothing to do with Fusion?
It's, that's, that's our removing medical service in T5. That has nothing to do with Fusion.
Right, so that, my assumption is, is if I'm a dentist and I want to open a dental office in my house, uh, it's not permitted use according to that.
That would, I, I don't know, that would be in the, it depends on if it's the T5.
What is it?
Okay.
Yeah, what's this T5? I'm sorry, T4. I'm sorry, T4. What's the T4?
T4 is a neighborhood district that is located, um, uh, on, south of Wolford Avenue. So very, very small, uh, zoning district that is primarily kind of a neighborhood based use. So given the discussion, we decided that we reviewed medical offices from that altogether. And then, uh, medical offices are not allowed as a home-based business. Okay, so whether it's dental or otherwise. Uh, so the zoning law would, would allow offices, medical offices in T5 Broadway Business after this amendment.
So medical is still permitted in the Broadway Business District.
Oh, yeah.
Which is where Fusion is.
Both large as well.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And I thought it was actually for the one against the one. So things might get this far. Bill said that there was, um, excess of, exit of review for the year, for fiscal year. Correct? And that they, and so much was used though from the reserve to balance this year's budget. So you've had what the net, what's left over?
I mean, the, the, the actual fund balance during the date. So I believe that, what, when he's closing the books, that we should have that in next financial review, the actual, like, end number.
Hey, I also asked going forward, I know that on the village website, you post the, the budget for the year. And I was asked that each month you post the budget results for that month. Because I've never, this is the first time ever I heard the budget review meeting. And maybe you're gonna do more of that, but I can support that the residents know.
Yep, so every two months, we're gonna do budget reviews at the board level. Um, and then whatever that board summary is will be part of the record.
It's gonna be posted every two months?
Whatever we get as a, as a summary, I intend to include in the, in the minutes and post for the public review.
You don't get a monthly summary?
We do not. Uh.
Don't you think you skip it?
It's something we're working towards. Yes.
So, so I have a different question. And because I think that from what I've been hearing from my friends and neighbors, the Fusion situation. If, this is the way I understand it, so help me clarify. Fusion is open for business. They receive their certificate of occupancy and they're open for business. And the next step for them in order to be fully in business is to get two additional permissions, licenses from Oasis or some other thing. And then they're fully operating. Now, it comes, it, it dawns on me that the challenge that was shared with everybody the first meeting that we had with the Fusion panel is in part the behavior of them as a business. And then the potential impact on the community because of behavior that we may not approve of. And I was thinking about this in terms of other businesses that I know that have performance standards in order to have their licenses renewed. Um, alcohol distribution bars have that kind of thing. I think it would be worth considering to say for everybody in the business district that we introduce something that is a code of conduct or behavior. Uh, I don't know whether we already have this in the district, but in other places that I've lived, you can't cut your grass at five o'clock in the morning because it's a, a noise ordinance. So you can, the village can have things that are interpreted as best neighbor practices. If I own a bar, my patrons are breaking your car when they go out because they're drunk and they're doing all kinds of things. My liquor license is at risk because of the behavior of the people who left my bar. So if on the business district, there was a standard by which you were to conduct your business, and somebody were to open up a bar and, uh, turned into a bikers' club and there were fifty motorcycles out here and they're racing up and down the street, we might have an issue with that. Somebody opens up a tattoo parlor and it turns out that there are people coming and going at three o'clock in the morning because they're opening up all crazy hours. To be able to say to any one of the businesses, these are the standards by which we choose to have you conduct your business. These are the hours, this is the behavior, this is what you told us you were going to do. And if you don't police it that way individually, we're gonna find you. There's gonna be a big fine. Maybe we can't take your license away from you. We didn't issue it to you in the first place. But if your patrons are devaluing my property, then you, the village, has a responsibility to say to them, you have to conduct your business in a way that's respectful of all of the village. That's a pretty easy and fair thing to do. That, these are the hours you're allowed to be in business. These are the hours that people, but whatever it is, and as long as it applies to us, the people on the, on the strip, we're not singling out a single business. We're just saying, this is what you told us you were gonna do and this is what we're gonna hold you to. And it seems pretty clear we're not stopping Fusion. But we can hold them to the standard of behavior. Pretty simple.
Any other thoughts on some of the realities of it?
I have concern in line of the recent, uh, letters uh, that the village has received from Fusion. That there be any, uh, public comment by the board. This is something we should, we need to discuss in the executive session.
And again, my position is that this is not Fusion. This is everybody.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I.
They're not being singled out.
Yeah.
Just, is this public comment, I'm sorry, I missed it. Yeah, uh, Bill Levens, right, I live on Wolford Avenue. And I just asked, have there been additional letters from Fusion's attorneys other than the one that you all discussed at the last meeting?
Yes.
So I have a question. So regarding amending the local law for the T4 zones, um, so everything we discussed previously as far as trying to amend the law so OTPs can't distribute narcotics that's getting the water for the businesses, drifts.
No, we, what, what this is, is just.
I understand if you can't comment because everybody's watching.
Well, I can tell you what this, you know, and I can give you a copy of it, but what it basically does is add the definition which we didn't have for a controlled substance dispensary, which would apply to, you know, any, you know, uh, such, you know, facility coming into the, uh, Broadway Business District. Uh, require, it would require a special use permit. So.
I see. So it would require a special use permit? If, if that zoning gets passed for all businesses?
That have come under that definition, which we didn't, you know, because as, as this whole thing transpired, we were in the process of, of revising, updating, you know, we did a master plan, new zoning, et cetera. And, uh, and this was something that we didn't have. So.
Sorry, and I don't mean to go twice, and I know there's other people, but... So you're gonna hopefully get this, the hearing going and pass this, right? It's a revised code. But it really doesn't stop Fusion or any other treatment facility that prescribes opioids. All it does is make them come in front of you and make you vote. Right? And you need three people to make that happen. So it really doesn't stop anything. You're really not doing anything. You're not addressing anything that was discussed a month and a half ago when everybody on the board said, absolutely not, we're not gonna do it. All you're really doing is possibly getting advice from counsel who, who suggests, you know, we don't comment public. And I can expect, I respect that. But being fearful of being sued by a business shouldn't stop you as the elected officials from doing the right thing for the village. Month and a half ago, everybody was on board, we're gonna shut this thing down. We don't want anything to do with that. Right? Now all you're doing is enacting some legislation that really doesn't apply to anything other than the fact that they have to come in, apply for the permit, stand in front of you and say, this is what we're gonna do. You're gonna take a vote. Right? I, I, you don't seem to be addressing the, the issue.
As you see it.
As I see it. But, thank you.
Anything for an answer? Right?
I just had a couple of, uh, questions. How, the, there was a, a law passed about properties and maintaining them. How is that enforced or addressed when there's many properties where people aren't mowing their lawns or taking care of their properties and nothing seems to happen?
That's actually not true, just this year.
Thirty?
How many?
Thirty.
Thirty NOVs to people.
Okay.
Um, most of them, as I remember, complied. I think there's five or six that have not.
There's a couple we're aware.
Okay, and then secondly, um, the inconsistency of addressing parking on alternate sides of the street.
You'd like to be part of that? Welcome that and like, always.
I've been bringing that up for ten years.
Agreed. And I, I noted that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and just the other day, I noticed one of the six cars had a ticket on it. One of six. They were all in the wrong, but only one had a ticket on it. And there's, there's, there's one car that's always on the wrong side of the road and, and I've never seen a ticket on it. And again, I'm not trying to get people in trouble and ticketed, but. If we have rules, then we should, it should be followed throughout. And there's some streets that are too skinny for double-sided parking and they have it. So I don't understand that either because it's, it's a safety issue. And then the last thing, I was just wondering if it's ever gonna be on the agenda, um, anything about Regeneron coming to the man. Because there's a rumor about Regeneron coming to Manans. Are we gonna wait for them to build something and then, oh, they're here.
So they can't build without price plan review and a building supplement. So, uh, it will, it will, when it's announced by LA County eventually, you know.
Where do they wanna build?
The L2 guys? It's, uh, up to a five hundred million dollar thing.
So for any Fusion activity, we can't talk about it because?
You want to comment, you're welcome to comment.
You guys can't, you can't, can't engage in a conversation with us because you're paid officials. Right? You're not allowed to?
About what specifically?
Any Fusion things that are, you know?
What would you like us to tell you about Fusion?
Is there an OTP, uh, appendix?
We're not part of that process, so, uh, I'm not aware of anything that is actually. Tim, are you?
I am not.
Anyone else?
Did you see the ads on that in the paper?
I did.
They're talking about methadone. And so they're already violating. Their, you know, contingency. The national system, I think they don't have.
I'm sorry, who said that?
That's part of the contingency.
What is, what about their contingency?
They're discussing things that don't take place.
Except they said they may and they, they will, as far as I know. You know, I think, I think somebody wanted. It was a paid advertisement. It was not an informational piece, that was not something that, that a reporter did.
They, they did. They, they deliberately set that up.
They did. They did.
Again, this isn't anything that the board has any control over, but as part of the conditional approval for certification, they had to roll back any misinformation on their website uh and could not promote any of the, and, and I've seen in the different films, I, I suspect actually correct, that they could not promote anything that they were not certified to offer on their website. Now, one would think that that would extend to other forms of advertising. Who knows? But, and, and again, that's not anything you have any control over outside of you, Steve, perhaps. In your conversations, if you're having any with Oasis along with the Council of Fusion, um make note of that.
Yeah, you said that you received correspondence from Fusion or new correspondence, Steve, right?
From their, from their attorney.
From their attorney?
It was to the, to the-
Was that in response to something the village sent to them or is this something separate?
I, I didn't get the sense that it was in response, that something uh of anything that, in, in response to anything the village sent to them. I got the sense that it was in response to some of the comments that I'm sure they'd heard. Um I'm sure they've had representatives listening in on each one of the board meetings or foiling minutes or, or whatever. And I, I believe, I got the sense, just speculation on my part, that it was in response to what they had heard uh or had, had been told was going on in the board meetings.
So is there a reason why the public can't know what it says in the correspondence?
There's a, we're, we're, I believe we're going into executive session uh this evening to discuss those things with the board because it involves legal issues and the potential for, the potential for litigation. And there's a, there's a provision in the law that says those things do not have to be improper and should not be discussed in a public forum. And especially in light of the letters we've received, uh I prefer not to do it in a public forum. Our recommendation is to talk to you in a public forum at this time.
How many letters have been received from Fusion's council?
Two.
Thanks.
I, 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 a good question. Um a lot of this, it's been the last several months, a lot of confusion and everything. And in the process of where Fusion is now, and what I understand is they're moving forward with more licensing or to do more than they have right now in approval. Is the board involved because there, there, in some of those meetings, there was a lot of concern that the villagers and the board didn't have any input in the beginning of this. I don't know if they weren't notified or just didn't have any input other than maybe going to a meeting. And that was kind of late in the game with their next steps, whatever they're going to do. Is there a process where, you know, there was concerns about the, they never got community input? And somebody changed the vote on a, suppose the former mayor really didn't object or something, didn't have a letter. Are you guys involved with the process of anything else they want to do other than what they've been approved of as of now with the state?
No.
Shouldn't you be?
Well, we sent a lot of- We just sent, I mean, we sent the response letter when, when uh when Oasis, uh we sent the response letter to Oasis when, when uh Fusion got its initial approval. And uh, uh that response letter uh was shared with the public uh quickly, as I recall. Uh before the board even had an opportunity to talk about it. So that's really the only community that we've had since, since uh Fusion started and was granted its initial uh, uh, okay, our, um, approval.
So in their process going forward, they don't have any uh further community input of any kind from community or the board before they, as they apply for? Well, maybe, maybe I can address that, Sean. I don't know if we're aware of any further application of the committee to Oasis. So that, that's speculation right now as to whether or not there is a further process or a further application of them there. We're, I'm not aware of one. And I know Tim um had foiled the materials. I looked through those uh which Tim provided me. So somebody can talk to had Oasis and say, hey, if anything else is coming up, we need to know in advance before a vote is taken so that they can have some sort of community input and board input. Can I make any sense out of that or?
Oh, Tim, do you want to talk about how it's been that much put forward for like the county of like?
Well, I, all I can say is that they're going to address the, the process by which they will, you know, it, it's actually the LGU that is, you know, uh to do the, you know, process of the, of the vetting and, you know, and uh notification and so on. They took all the input, the, the letters from, you know, so on and so forth that, to support the, the application. Uh they had nothing in their process that required them to touch base with the, you know, with us. So we're, you know, the county's looking to, you know, change that, so.
It seems to be-
It doesn't, that doesn't do anything for us.
Right, if it's, if one of, one of you as their elected officials should insert yourself into that process. You force your way in so that we have a voice before they get too far down the road where they go. We have all the information we need.
And that's true, except I feel like the board right now is being bullied and attorneyed to death by Fusion's attorneys. Like they're overwhelmed because they're being bullied by Fusion's attorneys. They can't even speak, they can't even speak. Free them. Higher reinforcements. There's a ton of attorneys in the town. No disrespect to you, Steve. I respect you. You do a great job. There's nothing we do to you, but you know exactly what I'm talking about. We get bully attorneys on the other side and they're trying to beat up these people that have run for office, that are sitting there like sitting ducks. And I'm sure, I haven't seen the language of the letters, they're really hoping to release the letters to the public so we can see, see what they're trying to do to individuals that we're paying to represent us. Because we're all the same, we're all one. They're speaking for us. We should all have one voice. And, and there is just a ton of attorneys coming down that I think would be willing to jump in and, and offer assistance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a complaint. I know four, five July is the time we have fireworks, but those fireworks have been doing, you know, several days after. Now, the village won apartments, I was, got disturbed, someone was using fireworks. And while I was picking up litter on Clifford Road, you know, less than two weeks ago, I found those fireworks on the street. And I wasn't too happy about having to pick that up. I don't like fireworks. It's a help, it's a welfare, public safety, quality of life hazard. No one should be allowed to have fireworks in the village Manans, and I would like the village to pass an ordinance prohibiting, prohibiting any fireworks.
They are illegal.
I'm sorry, I did not know, but I just, but I do want to have something done about it. I don't like, wish to be no complaint box, but something's got to be done about this problem with fireworks. Thank you. Let me speak on this important topic. I'm done.
Anyone else?
Well, open forum?
Yeah.
Yes. So we talk about the streetlights. So we have streetlights every fifty feet on the little road, my entire adult life. And my family's alive, lives with the streetlight outside of our houses, under the road in eleven millimeter. They recently came on Friday and changed the bulb and took down that soft yellow lighting that we're accustomed to in the older neighborhood where we are. The light, I think even violates our home building code with how it's shining. It's stadium light. The elevation of my front porch, if you open my front door, you can't see the porch because the light is hitting me in the face and so forth. It illuminates our entire driveway, it illuminates all the way to our back door. Even if they put a filter on it, because I called Donnie, poor Donnie, had to take my call Friday. He gave me the number of Kevin from National Grid, who was very responsive, and Kevin said, well, we can put a filter on it. And I respectfully requesting that the light be removed from eleven millimeter. It takes away from Christmas decorations, Halloween, it is so bright, even with my window darkening shades set, the light is coming through. So if they put a filter in, all it's going to do is maybe direct the light down a little bit, but it's still that bright daylight that our front lawn, you can't even pick night corrals because the light is, the light is so strong in front lawn, even with the filter, it's that bright daylight light. It's not the soft yellow light, it's not the same as what we were told we were going to get, which is the old fashioned lighting that still exists on Lines Avenue. Chuck, where do you get a load of this light?
I can't wait.
Yeah. And so on Brookside from the tracks down, there's two lights on Brookside, you don't have to worry about one at the top of the tracks and one at the base of the tracks. Uh I fear one across the airhouse. Yeah. So before you start getting, and, and Donnie said to me tonight, when I asked him if Kevin had gotten mad given that, oh, they can't take the light down because they have to have it. Well, there's another light just down the street, out on Ambro. If there's expense involved, I would be willing to share the expense or whatever, get an estimate from National Grid, I'll, I will pay it. But I respectfully requesting to please take the light out of the bulb in front of the-
So you don't want to allow them to put the shield up first and see how it works? You won't even allow that?
Absolutely would like the light taken out. If you, if someone-
So imagine if every resident could come and make the argument that they don't want a street light in front of their house and then the board had to remove street-
We have them every fifty feet, Brian, that's what I'm saying, they're every fifty feet, and there's some dark spots on the road. And not everybody has streetlights in front of their house. For some reason, we were pegged on the little road that are every fifty feet.
How long has the streetlight been there?
I have no idea.
For a whole lives.
Yeah. It's in front of your parents' house right now too. But it's the elevation of our stairs and that picture that I had sent to you, that's with no lights on in my house. That was me just opening the door. That's how bright those lights are. And all the light filter is going to do is direct that bright daylight down.
Set it up to your house?
No, it's going to be all over the front lawn of the driveway, blitz the driveway from all the way up. It's just, it's really affecting our quality of life.
Did you send this picture to the whole board?
I did not, but I can, I have several of them.
Oh, okay, because I, I have not seen, this is the first I'm hearing about it.
It just occurred Friday, today's Monday. So I was giving National Grid a chance to respond because Kevin said to me he would process the order to remove the light, that something's changed between Friday and today.
I haven't heard from him yet, so I'll, I'll call Thursday and Monday.
I understand you can't take them all down, but there's one every fifty feet on that street where other streets don't have that. The only thing blocking part of my driveways and I'm only a tree in my backyard. But it's, it's really, if someone, please just come home tonight. Please, somebody, come and save it. It's ridiculous, stadium. But I really do believe it violates our building code that you read last week.
Well, in the, it has to be down lighting, you can't-
It's not.
It, it, well, in a parking lot, that's, that's what a requirement is, it has to be down lighting, yeah.
It's not. I, I will send pictures to you.
Turn it for the car, so it's not nice.
Where do you get them on Manans?
I can't wait.
Where do you get them? There's one, so I misspoke, they, they renamed Railroad Avenue-
Station Street.
Station Street.
So there's one on Station Street in front of that little blue house. And when you first go to turn the corner, you're like, oh, uh, is there a problem? Because the light is so bright. And then you get up there and it's a street light, and now we have them on, um, I, I'd be boiling, you know, whatever it costs. And I'm respectfully requesting I would be here next Monday or two weeks, hopefully Kevin responds.
I'll call in the morning. I'll call in the morning. Call Thursday.
Well, thanks. Thank you. Stop over, anyone.
Kelly, somebody measures lumens seconds in the name of this light, shouldn't that pay off on the street?
Exactly what they're supposed to do. Okay, we didn't change anything. We didn't, they have anything, we just-
I mean, my renovation to the village means you're very well versed in it. Coming in such practice in spot locations, it's disorienting drivers, especially their visual frontal at night. That older people like me, for example. Take one look at that, it went down. What if you get the same lumens per light? Might not be yellow, but at least-
Do they have anything with the lower lumens?
I mean, I-
And a down, and a down, you know, lighting like we require.
I actually won't do it, Tim.
Directional.
It's brightness. Simple as that. Does it do?
Even if they're directed?
Because if it's too bright, it's too bright, no matter how you-
You're probably dealing with something that's about twenty-five times brighter than the other light.
I don't want to sound tree huggy, but I know it disrupts the fireflies too, and that's- And then I, I wrote an article about them being on the decline and that would feel really bad.
You don't have one street, one street. Just people that don't- Station Road is overgrown, it's like really overgrown.
There's a call down, there's a call to the railroad about it.
Okay, I don't know, no, it's not the railroad side, it's the people's yard side.
They got a, they got a notice of violation the other day.
Okay, cool.
But the railroad also, it also has to be contacted, it's mother issues with the, uh, the gutter along the rail where it looks like it might flood out, so.
I wasn't there when it was- Are we like the latest truck stop in the, like, all the truckers must talk to stop at Manans and- Yeah, they got a couple lots now that they line up to go to sleep and I don't know.
That's a good point. What's the zoning that now it's like?
Today and like-
They're gonna, yeah, you sent the letter out today, so they're gonna, they have to go to court twenty-four.
More notes? Next we're going to have an introduction. Dr. Clint has some exciting news.
Hello, everybody. Mike is a capable decision maker, let's say, a general clerk. He does help. Uh Mike is a graduate of New York. We say, yeah, it's salary, at least for the roster, there's some cases. Uh he did internship last year with the county's office before that, and he had internship with the county's office. And he's very, has a big deal, very excited. Excited, welcome.
Do you have a speech prepared, Mike?
I have no speech prepared. A little short notice for a speech. I'm very excited to work for the village.
I'll come later.
I'm also very excited to help us with our project. Yes.
Do we need a resolution?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
That's very good news. This has been, this has been a long, long time, long time, long search.
Thank you. Okay, uh next we're going to move on to Southend's uh water and sewer project and Abidababella's contract for those services.
Um do you want to discuss it?
Yeah, I can go ahead and uh kind of go through what, what's involved with that. Uh the Southend project involves about replacement of water and sewer lines throughout the um Southend neighborhood. And presently, we're wrapping up the design, the ninety percent uh plans and specs have all been sent to the agencies and for review. And so when we get the response back from them, it'll be ready for the next phase, which would be uh going out to bid, contract award, and then uh construction period. And so what we did was we put together a contract amendment um to our existing contract, which covers the, our existing contract covers design, and we're pretty much wrapping that up. So this next amendment covers the bidding, contract award, and um uh construction fee services. And the existing contract has all been approved by the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which um is funding the project. And so this would be an amendment to that contract under the same terms and conditions that uh EFC has already approved that are appended to our contract. And so we were looking at um the, uh, the board to um look over the, uh, the agreement and um- look over the, uh, the agreement and, um, with, with the board's approval, we can, um, send that on to, uh, Environmental Facilities Corporation for final approval and, um, you know, continue with the next phase of the project.
Do you want to talk about the, uh, the total contract value and how it's going to be paid for?
I, I can barely hear, but, uh, did you say, uh, how it's gonna be paid for? Yeah, the, the funds are all, um, approved in the, uh, the funding package through, um, uh, Environmental Facilities Corporation. There's two, two funds that it's funded through, which is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and also the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And the clean waters for the sewer portion of it and the drinking waters for the water portion of it. And all the, all the funds that are in for engineering, for construction are, have all been, um, approved by, uh, Environmental Facilities Corporation. And it's in a, um, uh, funding package that is, uh, a combination of, um, grants and, um, uh, loan, loans through, uh, Environmental Facilities Corporation. So that would all be paid similarly. It's exactly the same setup as our existing design contract. Um, but this is, um, this was set up in the funding package for the next phase of, uh, services as well.
Is the next step for us to read the, uh, read the resolution?
Sure. Unless there's any questions, any more questions?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Resolution of the Village, uh, Manandere Village Board issuing secret negative deck and adopting local law number five or twenty.
Not that one.
Oh, sorry. Oh, this one, sorry. The resolution was that July seventeenth, Manandere Village Board meeting. Tom Bates La Bella led a discussion regarding the Southend Water and Sanitary System Improvement Project. After discussion, uh, I've read the following resolution. Whereas the Southend Water and Sanitary System Improvement Project is being funded through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, State Revolving Fund Program and DWSFR, uh, number one eight three 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 water and CWSRF number five six four eight dash zero one dash zero zero sewer. And whereas the project involves replacement of the water and sewer infrastructure throughout the village's Southend neighborhood. And whereas La Bella presently has professional service agreement with the village dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one for design phase services for this project, which is due to performance with the New York State Environmental, uh, Facilities Corporation, SRS, requirements, terms and conditions. And whereas the design phase is nearing the completion and the next phase for professional services will be bidding, contract award and construction phase services. And whereas La Bella submitted to the village board for review and approval, a proposal for professional services dated May thirty first, twenty twenty-three for bidding, contract award and construction phase services. And whereas La Bella submitted to the village board, a professional services change order, PSCO, dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, as amendment to the PSA whereby the PSA and NYSEFC, SRF requirements, terms, conditions apply to the PSCO and where the village board has reviewed the proposal and PSCO and now therefore be resolved for the, uh, Manandere Village Board hereby approves proposal for professional services dated May thirty first, twenty twenty-three by La Bella for bidding and contract awards and construction phase services. And further, the Manandere Village Board authorized the mayor to execute the PSCO dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three with La Bella for bidding, contract award and construction phase professional services.
Second. All those favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You have the valve, the transmission valve?
Yeah, the water release valve.
Did you want me to discuss that as well? I can go through that one with, with you as well, if you'd like. That is a, it's called Contract Two, which is the transmission main, uh, valve. And that's also part of the, um, the Southend project. It was originally in, is all one contract and, and due to the, um, critical nature of the transmission main, being able to shut it off. We, uh, were asked by the village a little while back to pull that out as a separate contract, uh, still under the same project, but, um, put it out to bid as a separate contract. So, uh, we completed the design, went out to bid and the village went out to bid and received, uh, three bids on the, on the project. And, um, we reviewed the, uh, the low bidder and they were, based on the references and our review, the, uh, the, they were qualified to perform the work and, um, we were recommending that the, uh, the board approve, um, uh, the, their bid. So, and then once, once approved, then we can, uh, proceed with, uh, having the contracts executed and, uh, move into construction.
Tom, you want to talk about what exactly that work will do for the village?
Right now, um, there's actually, uh, and the reason that it says water leak valve in there is that the, um, water leak, water system, the distribution system is hooked into the Manans system on the trans, on the transmission main that comes from Troy. So all the villages are, the, most of the villages, it's not all the water for the village comes from the city of Troy through a, uh, old concrete transmission main that goes under the river and then comes through, uh, the town of Colony Park. And then, then that's where the water leak connection is. And so if there was ever a break between the water leak connection and the city of Troy, there's no way to shut down that main. So this work would involve, um, putting in temporary stops to be able, and bypasses to be able to stop the water, cut, cut the pipe, put in a new valve and then, um, open the valve up. What, what was that?
Still you.
That's still you.
Okay. And so finally, um, that way, if there ever was a, uh, a major break in the, uh, the Troy main, then you could shut the valve and then bring water in from water leak until the, the main is repaired. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Do we have, do we need to read a resolution or do we just have to vote?
Just gotta prove Constantine for the price.
So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, move that we accept the bid from Constantine Construction for two hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty cents for, uh, replacing the, uh, water leak valve.
All those favor.
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Thank you very much.
So, uh, Local Law Five was, uh, introduced back in May. Uh, it received sign off on the county local law five, just adding Schedule Four into the zoning code, which, uh, the frontages for all the buildings. So that was inadvertently left, uh, uh, of the original zoning code. So that, that's what Local Law Five is. And Local Law Six repeals, uh, existing village code chapters thirty, one hundred, one forty, and eight, one seventy-two, all of which have been rolled into the existing zoning laws. Those just have to be repealed. Uh, and either of these laws have any significant impact or, or change, uh, on the zoning laws.
So this is just a formal.
It's like a recertification, just thing of the village code, which we're gonna continue to do as the general code in future months down the road.
Do we need to read these resolutions?
Just probably read the, uh, out there.
Yeah, I need to read the look.
We've had, we've had.
Have we had the public hearing?
We've had public hearing. This is, this is, we had, we wanted, we wanted to wait and so Albany County approved the changes. So that's all it is just.
As long as we've had proper notices, you have public hearing.
That's all been done.
All you need is a, uh.
So this notice.
Start with the, now, now therefore be resolved.
Now therefore be resolved that Section One Village Board of Village of Manas adopts attached Local Law Five, twenty twenty-three, Local Law amending chapter one sixty-nine zoning of Village of Manas Code by adding Schedule Four frontage types. And Section Two, the village, the Manas Village Clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting, shall file, the local law with the Secretary of State shall publish a summary once in the official newspaper and post a copy of the local law at or near the main entrance to the village clerk.
In a second.
Second. Second. All those favor. Aye. Any opposed?
Now therefore be resolved that Section One Village Board of Village of Manas adopts attached Local Law Six, twenty twenty-three, the local law amending the village code by repealing chapter thirty, planned development districts, chapter one hundred, gasoline stations, chapter one forty, site plan review and chapter eight, one seventy-two, site plan review regulations. And Section Two, the Manas Village Clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting, shall file, the local law with the Secretary of State shall publish a summary once in the official newspaper and post a copy of the local law at or near the main entrance to the office of Village Clerk.
I'll second.
All those favor. Aye. Any opposed? We're gonna talk right now about Comp Alliance.
Yep. You want, you got a table to, your table on the, the tree thing, right?
The tree thing, we're gonna have.
Again?
Yeah, um, there's a couple other emergencies that need to be addressed for, uh, because of paving on Brookside and Land Road.
Okay.
So, uh, because time is limited, we're gonna have to see if those can get addressed.
All right. Oh, I, okay, okay. That's right. That's where it has to go. Okay.
The paving trucks are gonna take out the trees, so we gotta trim them off. Uh, Don?
Okay, um, Comp Alliance or the new, new trustees is our workers comp, um, carrier. They take care of all the worker comp claims, take care of all the filing and all that stuff. Um, we have to renew the contract with them. And I'm just asking that we, I get a approval to, for some, for the mayor to sign the agreement with Comp Alliance.
I've moved, uh, that the board allows the mayor to sign the agreement with Comp Alliance for the period, uh, uh, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. All those favor. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, uh, when we have, uh, uh, approved a special use permit for the dispensary, um, they came back with a couple, uh, questions about the hours that they operate and they would like to adjust the hours to make it more appropriately nearer the dispensary and rental. And, um, for what Webster has, and so they were asking from Monday through Saturday, nine to ten, Monday, eleven to nine. So as, uh, we've already issued, it would be an amendment, right Matt?
Yes.
To the special use permit. And in the special use permit, the hours would be indicated so that they are forcible. Is that fair to say?
Enforcable. Enforcable. Absolutely.
Um, does anyone have a concern about changing the hours?
I, I, I was a bit caught up by the fact that this, they agreed to it and now they're going back on that and how they did not know about the hours of the rental in any case.
What did we originally agree to?
It was, they were gonna go. Yeah, and there was, yeah, they were gonna, yeah.
Eleven to nine.
Yeah. So they're adding on a couple hours on Sunday, which they really, you know, I, I have no real issue so much with them staying. You know, ten o'clock seems a bit.
I agree.
Late for, to me on any weekday, you know, unnecessarily so, but.
Different element at night.
Yeah, it changes. Things change.
It's revenue.
Well, that's what they're, that's the way they're looking at it. So they don't want their customers running across the river.
Or having things delivered from across the river.
Right, exactly. So.
But when we originally.
Yep.
They originally meant, they, we did say that we should limit them to a certain number of hours.
Right.
The minimum allowed is seventy.
So right now their new hours are eighty-eight. So I, I think ten o'clock is too late. I worry about it being too dark and the safety of it. They said they would only deliver during hours that they're open, so that means they're gonna deliver until ten o'clock at night. We have all those new streetlights.
Honestly, if I could from my two thousand, um, people don't all work seven to three and nine to five too. You gotta think about that. I mean, I worked for years, five PM to two thirty AM. So, I mean, I would.
I work every nineteen.
You know what I'm saying? All us respectful people will be home in bed with our jammies. We have the police department. They've done a great job. I, I just, you know, I don't care either way. I'm just saying it's a twenty-four hour world. It really is.
You know, I understand that. They came before you. They came to an agreement on the, on the the hours of operation. They agreed, you agreed. They haven't opened yet. But I, I can understand if they come back in six months and say, look, we need more hours because we're, for whatever reason, we're busy with this and that, we're better served. But they haven't even opened yet. They agreed to what you guys said. Why would you change it?
I also think didn't, wasn't, didn't the one in Rensley are just open?
Yes.
So they probably didn't know what the hours of the competition are going to be.
I mean, that was on the spot too. And they were here when we were going through Fusion and I think they were like that, you know? I don't think it's a big deal. My only, is, anybody?
Brian or Kevin?
Kevin or Ryan? Are you, Kevin, you on?
Yeah, Don, I'm on. Don?
Brian, um, at, Heather, do we still have three officers on or only two officers?
Uh, only on Thursday is there three on. Uh, most of the time, it's only two uniformed officers. Um, and one detective.
Does the police department have any concern with these revised hours up to ten o'clock, uh, and then the longer hours on Sunday, eleven to nine?
I, I don't have any concern with the hours. I just, I kind of agree with whoever said, you know, you guys agreed to something in the beginning and then all of a sudden now it's changed. That's the only thing that's concerning to me. What else would they come back and change?
Six months to say, hey, we need more hours or three months or something. But we'll have a little experience before they, they wanna change things.
The board agree with that?
I, 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 I do. I don't feel. Yes. So we're back. Can we also speak for hours of the liquor store? Do you go with it? I know the liquor store in the village has hours earlier than twelve o'clock. I agree on Sundays.
The Sunday hours, the Sunday hours don't bother us. Yes.
Would we, would the board be agreeable to, uh, mirroring the liquor store hours?
Which, which are the, are, uh?
Really, if we're gonna use something as a.
Yeah.
Okay. So their hours of operation are ten to nine every day besides Sunday, twelve to nine. Sunday, twelve to nine? Yep, and every day, ten to nine. Which is pretty much what I think I said, except for Sunday being like I said, twelve, I think I said twelve to eight is what we originally agreed to.
Would we be agreeable to making them to, to match?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, uh, make the cannabis dispensary match their hours as the Manans.
Just, just, uh, before you go too far with something like that, you've had, you know, we have our opinions, but you have a, a discussion with the cannabis people. Now you're talking about changing the hours based on something else that they didn't request either. And I don't think.
Am I saying this right?
That's a point well taken.
I mean, if you're gonna negotiate, you need, need to negotiate and say to the cannabis people, this is what we want you to do, mirror these hours. But they, you.
But they, you agreed to one thing, they proposed something a little different, and now you're proposing something different again. So you're kind of negotiating here without them in the room.
So did they, did they submit a formal request to change just the Sunday hours?
No, they requested to change all of the hours.
Mirror the, mirror the one in Rensley.
And that was by agreement. It wasn't something that we had said, this is what it has to be. It was, they said by agreement.
They will, they will, this is an approval on the number of hours slightly.
Even with.
It makes sense.
Even with mirroring the liquor store?
Albany County is changing the liquor store hours for New York State. So it will be nine to nine every day besides Sunday, which would be ten to nine. So they're allowed to open two hours early, which they don't do the liquor store. That will be the new Albany County law.
Okay, nine, 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 eleven to nine. And that meets their, I mean, well, they're not, it meets what they want. I'm just trying to follow up on, it's a good point that we can't just start changing all of the conditions. So as long as, but.
They're the ones who change.
But yes, they requested a change to every.
They open the door.
They open the door. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think we table and have a conversation with them.
Not opening it, so.
And then they could always request a change.
Yeah.
And again, to John's point, if, if they do.
Negotiate with them, not us.
If they, if they operate well.
I mean, before you pass a resolution, you got to have an agreement with them.
They want as many hours as they can open.
But we're not wrestling, we're, we're also not wrestling. We're just, we're not a city, we're not a city.
They don't really know. Yes.
Don, you got that for the next meeting?
Yep. I thought you're going to talk somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don, can you just send me the original approval resolution?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you everything. I'll, I'll put the seal on it so you have it for the.
Thank you. All right, hold on. Don, do you have anything?
Um, the food trucks and the concert in the parks, they're still going to be, are going on. All the food vendors will be here, actually a couple extra ones there. And the concert tomorrow, if it's raining, we're going to do it in the pavilion. If it's not, if it's storming with electrical storms, we'll handle it, you will know.
We made that decision at ten AM.
Yep. And that's all I got.
The weather looks like a ten AM.
You're going to feel like the superintendent making snow day decisions. And the food, food truck festival, we have a big radio coming in.
We have an extra, we have an extra vendor coming, too.
If you like St. Patrick's Day entertainment, that's, that will be back.
It's Irish music.
No, 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 but they performed at the St. Patrick's Day dinner here this past year.
Yeah, every year.
Well, no, this, this was their best, this was the first year they, they performed here.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't know.
It's all right. But if you'd like Irish music, I can put in a request. I know the lead. Yeah.
That's all I got.
So you got, our next meeting will be talking about a nuisance alarm law that mirrors what Colony does for nuisance fire alarms. There are a number of entities in the village that have consistently had problems with their fire systems that drain on village resources, and so Colony did this institute a law that basically addresses those who are frequent flyers on the fire alarm list. So we're going to talk about that next meeting, Nick's going to be working on that. Talk about the LEDs. Obviously, we all know. LEDs are being changed over throughout the village.
So that we need to address, right? That we're going to address?
Yeah.
On the streetlights?
Yes.
Well, yeah. The one, Laura's having that. Karen Long has, Karen Long has asked if we would consider, for her kickball league, which runs for six weeks, paying for a concession stand worker. Apparently, it was very popular.
It was popular.
Last season. So she asked if we would pay for, let's see, it would be eight hours a weekend and we run six weeks. So it's forty-two hours of a, of a, would it be somebody from the youth program or?
Yes.
What period is it?
So it starts on, what, September eighth?
I think it's, it's in the fall.
I'm not sure what age is.
Adult.
Oh, this is.
And honestly, I think they had more people than the little, you guys, watching, watching and participating.
So last year she asked the same thing. We kind of said, let's see how it goes. Apparently, it was very popular. So I wonder, does someone have an interest in motion to approve a kickball vendor concession stand worker?
With the summer help?
I'll make a motion to approve a concession stand worker for the kickball, don't kickball league. What did you say?
Eight hours a weekend and runs for six weeks.
And that will come out of the youth?
Yeah, we have the youth, youth employment.
But it's adults.
The youth, the youth, no, the youth, the, are the workers.
Oh, oh, I see, okay, all right, okay.
I'll second. All those favor. Any opposed? She has one matter for executive session, a legal matter.
Posted to go into executive session to address a legal matter?
What's the favor?
Hi.